Good evening. Thank you for having us into your home this evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of March 11, 2024. Before we start the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to the signing of the warrant.
Jim and I make a motion we sign the warrant of February 26, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the regular session of our Select Board minutes of February 26, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the regular session minutes February 26, 2024.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous as well. Next on the agenda is the approval of the executive session minutes of February 26, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes of February 26, 2024.
And I would second that as well.
Thank you. I make that unanimous. Next on the agenda is public hearings, and we do not have any this evening. So we go to our scheduled appointments. Our first appointment is with our police chief, Robert Tuzino, who would be recommending to us to make the entire length of Court Square no parking at any time. Chief, thank you for coming here again this evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
And like I said, thank you for revisiting this for us. The last time you brought this up was our last meeting of the 26th. And, you know, there were some legitimate concerns about taking up two other parking spaces and making it difficult to make a left turn from this lot onto the Court Square. And you did revisit it again. Can you give us a little?
Yeah, so actually, we went over it myself. Rick Alani and I spoke about it. We kind of visited the location. I don't think there's any good way to mitigate this other than making it no parking. And, you know, Rick conveyed that he feels the same way. You know, we thought about a couple different avenues to make it easy to mitigate. And, you know, as we were talking, somebody came up, pulled them parked, and somebody was trying to pull out. And, you know, they're throwing their hands up in the air because they can't turn left or right. It's just too tight.
And not only that, but you have that multifam
Right.
right directly across the street from the part of the town hall here. And a good portion of that is their driveway.
Right.
Which you really can't even park in that area or anything because they have to back out and drive in on occasion. So, yeah, that's... Thank you for that. Board members?
I appreciate you taking a look at it again. So, that's all.
Michael?
Thank you very much, as always.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the police chief as it relates to no parking in Court Square.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Unanimous. And again, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good night, Ken.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to stay for the Diller Street one, too? We could do that next, maybe? The Diller Street?
Take it out of order.
Jimmy's going to talk.
Yeah.
Jerry, just a couple of minutes, and then if that's okay?
All right. So we're going to take F1 out of order?
Sure, sure.
Do we do that? Just...
Absolutely. So right now, we will go out of order, and we'll go to the new business.
I realize I had that.
And what we have here is information from our parks director, James Asom, requesting that the board install no parking signs on Diller Street between Quinsipog Road and the Louisa Lake parking lot. And also, our police chief, Tuzino, also concurs. He investigated the matter, and he agrees with this request. Mr. Asom?
Yeah, so it actually stemmed my memory because in your notes, it shows a picture of the Louisa Lake disc golf sign, but that has nothing to do with the meeting tonight. That was just... That's just my signature picture?
I saw that, yeah.
But it did stem my memory of when I first started with that, that the Conservation Commission had said, "Well, what are we going to do if people start parking here for the disc golf course?" And I didn't want that to become an issue.
Sure.
But this is unrelated to that. It's not from the disc golf. It's just residents using that as added parking. And it's basically between Quinsipog to the corner of where we're building the new parking lot. There's three areas that are pretty flat, pretty worn down, and people are able to park there. There are a couple of bankings that you can't park there regardless. So what I was... I reached out to Rick, and I tagged the chief on it also, just to show him some pictures that I had taken. And I think if we had put four signs on that side, if we're able to put four signs on that side to allow no parking at any time, I think it's going to stop the parking, but also, you know how Diller Street gets in? It's just as you were speaking of, the pulling out and stuff. I think it'd just become a bigger problem if we continue to allow these cars and trailers and, you know, different trucks and stuff that are parking there on a daily basis.
Yeah, I agree. Any members who would like to comment or suggestions?
I think there's two issues here. One is, you're going to post signs that no parking signs relate to the public way. They don't relate to off of the public way. Right? So if you're going to regulate parking on a public way, you're dealing with the actual street. So you post a no parking sign, and someone's parking on land that's owned by the town, that's controlled by the Park Commission, or controlled by whichever town entity, right? Or even private property, right? That no parking sign doesn't give you what you're looking for. Now, do I think there should be no parking along that stretch with the S-turns and the rest of it and the volume of traffic? Absolutely. But I just want to caution people that the no parking sign related to the public way doesn't give you the authority to deal with the car or trailer, as I look at some of these pictures, that's on the property itself. The way you deal with that is, you tell those people, "You cannot park that trailer here. It's our property. You're trespassing." And you tow it as a trespass tow.
I was going to say, we already have this authority under state statute. We can just hold it.
Certainly.
And, you know, we're talking, like you said, two different things. You know, anytime that there's a vehicle on public... on our... on town land, you know, that's trespass. It's trespass for a vehicle.
How about if we have the time to say that?
Well, that's my... You're reading my mind. My suggestion would be no parking with a line that says, "No trespassing on the town property," you know? With a motor vehicle.
One sign to cover both.
With a motor vehicle.
And that would come to the police, be able to...
That gives...
Or even our department.
Then they're on notice. It's very much like, you know, people always... They're puzzled when you see a sign that says, "No trespassing. Police take notice." It's simply to cover the statute. That's where the chief gets his authority. So now, a police officer that goes down there, if it's halfway on the pavement, or two wheels on the pavement, sure, you can tag it, and it's no parking, but it should be no parking tow zone to them.
Right. It's no different than that seat behind Wendy's when we did that.
Precisely.
You posted all that. Same exact thing.
And I noticed in Mr. Asom's request, he did say to install signs that would be... and he'd be open to any suggestion that would more or less make the wording...
And that's why I sort of pulled this out, the no parking at any time, unauthorized vehicles towed at vehicle owner's expense.
Well, see, and that's where you run into... That's a private property sign, which is... that's where he gets his authority, you know, under 128.
So he adds town property or...
And we can talk.
The property that's... So we just want to replicate the signs that are behind Wendy's, that area.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the signs that no parking on the public way, and that there's no parking on the land owned by the town. You're a trespasser, and we'll figure out the language that you fit onto a sign that gives them the authority just to take the vehicle away, and people have to pay. Because once they have notice... But I think once we erect the signs, we shouldn't run the plates and get people fear notice in writing that, "Look, you can't do this anymore."
And that's why I called the station to ask them to go down, and they did do that to the one house on the corner where the cars were parking. And it was fine all last week, and then today, going by, there was another, you know, truck parked.
It is dangerous pulling out. You know...
Diller Street in general.
You know, even when traffic is heavy and you're moving, you know, people crawling along, all of a sudden, someone's trying to come out of the wooded area. It really...
It's just how it's cleared over the years. It's almost like it's open there, where it's inviting for that if you need extra parking. You know, you're parking there instead of...
How many people lived across the street? How clear it? So it's... Yeah, I think it's, you know, work with the chief as far as the wording to cover both things. So you're on this side of the curb and that side of the curb. It's all owned by the town, and it'll accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, as well as a safety factor. It really is.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Make that unanimous, based on the wording and ways to go. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Have a good night, y'all.
Take care. Then we'll go back to our scheduled appointments, which is Jerry Edens.
All right. We have a little delay to start it off. You're welcome.
And she is here this evening to present to us the final design for the Town Park Fitness Court mural project.
Yes, correct.
Which I think is fantastic. Today, more than ever, we need everybody to be active and to do their exercises.
Yes. Well, I'm sure Jim's happy to hear you say that part.
And it'll be a convenient place to go.
Yes.
And it's free.
Yes.
And you can go anytime, any age.
Yes.
So I think that's remarkable. I think that's very... That's a great addition to our town.
Yes.
Thank you, both Parks Department and yourself and your committee as well. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So I am here representing the Cultural Council. For anybody who's watching, I'm Jerry Edens, chairperson of the Milford Cultural Council. Thank you for putting me on the agenda this evening. There are a lot of things happening in Milford's parks this year, including a big renovation at Milford Town Park. And one piece of that renovation is the installation of a fitness court. And this fitness court project is a partnership with several different entities. So it's being driven by the Parks Department in collaboration with the National Fitness Campaign, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts. And the Cultural Council is working with Jim and the Parks Commission on the public art component. And so, over the last few years, we've had a really excellent working relationship with the Parks Department on our initial public art projects, the brush-to-table, the art barrels. And Chris, if you can go to the next slide. We worked with Jim to install the chess checkers table in Town Park, and then we hand-painted game boards that are over at Louisa Lake. Okay, next slide. So the fitness court is an outdoor exercise area. This slide shows an aerial view of what one looks like. This one is double-sided, and if you've seen other pictures of fitness courts, a lot of them, they just have the exercise area with all the equipment on the left side. But Jim and his team, when they applied for the grant, they went for the whole thing. So this version is called the Fitness Court Studio. In the middle is a 32-foot-long training wall, and that's where an artist's mural will be installed. On that training wall facing the exercise mat that doesn't have any equipment on it. On the opposite side, it's a training mat with equipment embedded in the training mat, and then there's all kinds of equipment that's attached to the training wall itself. So on that side of the training wall, there's actually instructions. There will be a QR code so that you can download an app on your phone with best practices for how to use this equipment on the fitness court. Chris, can you go to the next slide, please? There are over 500 of these fitness courts installed throughout the country. Some of them have the local artist mural program installed. A lot of them don't, but these are just samples of some of the fitness courts that do have murals included. Okay. So this is a large image of the training wall that will feature the mural. This isn't our design. But I just wanted to point out, it's 32 feet wide. It's a little bit over than seven feet tall. The mural itself will take up that whole area, except for the bottom-left corner, which is where the logos for National Fitness Campaign and Blue Cross will go. And then in the bottom-right corner is where the artist's signature will be included. The mural is not going to be painted on the training wall. It's going to be digitally printed on a heavy-duty vinyl product that's manufactured by 3M. It will have an anti-graffiti coating on it, and it will be applied to the training wall at the factory. And so, when the training wall is delivered to Town Park, the mural will already be installed.
Very good.
Next slide, please. So Jim has been working directly with the folks at the National Fitness Campaign and Blue Cross since the grant for this project was approved. And then he got us involved back in October because with the timeline, we knew that we were going to need to start working on the call-for-artists document so we could start promoting that at the beginning of December. So ever since October, once a month, I've been meeting with Jim and the liaison at the National Fitness Campaign regarding the progression of this project. They have their own set of design criterias for what can be included in the mural and what can't be included. And we took that information. They sent us a template to use for the document that we would send out to artists. We customized it to meet Milford's needs, explaining where it was going to go, Milford Town Park, here's the location. But as far as the requirements for artists, that all came from National Fitness Campaign and Blue Cross. And then, once we had that document together, we sent it to Jim to review, National Fitness Campaign folks to review, and then we posted it on our page on the town website, and we promoted it. So, Chris, if you could go to the next slide, please. No, that's backwards, I think. There we go. So we've had this whole process since October. So once the call-to-artists document was created and uploaded to the website, we executed a call-for-artists the first week in December. And we do that... We broadcast that announcement as widely as we can. There are numerous websites where artists go to look for these types of things. So we posted the announcement there. We sent a press release to all local media. We contacted all the artists we've worked with in the past. And so, by the deadline on March 12th, we had received 23 different designs. And they were amazing. It's always a joy to get... Execute a call-for-artists and to see all this beautiful work come in. There's so much talent out there. According to the process in place by the National Fitness Campaign, we had to choose our top three. Not just one, but three. And the Cultural Council has a deliberative process in place for when we do hold a call for art. And so, we look through them, we rank them, we have a meeting, we vote. And so, we got our top three candidates. We sent them to Jim and to the National Fitness Campaign. They approved all three. She sent them on to Blue Cross Blue Shield to review. They approved all three, and they approved our number-one choice with the caveat that the artist would need to tweak the color palette just a little bit. I don't know if you noticed, but in the design criteria, it is required that artists use some of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Massachusetts colors in the design. So, not a big deal, but they did request that there would be a change. So, once we got to that approval level, I presented the top-three designs to the Parks Commissioners last month, and they voted unanimously to approve our number-one choice. Right after that, we contacted the artist. Her name is Carol Abram. She's a native of Massachusetts. She lives in Sharon. She's very excited to be selected. And then I connected her with the folks at the National Fitness Campaign and Blue Cross so that they could start collaborating on these tweaks to the image. So, Chris, if you could go to the next slide. So this is the final design. This is what's in your packet. It's almost 100% representative of what will be on the mural. This does not have the color tweaking in it yet because that's something that's still in process, but it's not going to be a major change. And then there's one other thing that will be slightly different for the final product, and that is these photographic engravings that she has on the cubes. A few of those, the photographs that she put in her design entry, weren't in the public domain, and so she's coming out to Milford to photograph those for herself. So very, very minor changes, but what you see is the final design for the most part. And, Chris, if you could go one more slide? So I mentioned that there were 23 designs. Out of all of those, why did we choose this one? And it was a challenge because there were so many exceptional entries. And it might be antithetical to think about this when you're reviewing art and looking at art, but there's actually an objective piece to the process as well as a subjective piece. So the objective piece is, does the design meet the criteria that has been established? And in looking at all of the criteria that was laid out for us, this design ticks all the boxes. Not only does it demonstrate one of the three themes that they recommended, it demonstrates all three of the themes. It was really remarkable. Artistically, this design is colorful, it's energetic, it's family-friendly, it's just got this really positive vibe going to it. And then a couple of other key points that stood out for us, the members of the Cultural Council, is... The first one is, we love how this design reflects its surroundings. And it does that in a few different ways. Importantly, it reflects what's happening on the fitness court itself. You know, it's got some of the moves that are happening. It's got somebody using the exercise rings. It reflects the natural area of Town Park, but there are also lots of elements that reflect Milford history and Milford's identity. So if you look at the middle cube, front and center, it's Milford paint granite, and it's engraved with the Milford Town seal. The blue one right behind it is the facade of one of Milford's previous shoe factories. Over on the left, the red one on the bottom is Milford Town Hall. Thank you. To the right of that is Louisa Lake, and then the blue one above that is bicyclists on the bike trail. I think that's one of the ones that she's changing. And then, over to the right, the blue one, that's actually Boots Mizzouli, the jazz musician. And then, oh, golly, oh, General Draper. And then the other red one is the Irish Round Tower at St. Mary Cemetery. And then the right... The blue one on the right, we just cut off just a little bit on the slide, but on the mural, you'll be able to see the entire thing. It's Memorial Hall.
That is something.
The artist reached out to us early in the process, and she said, "Is there anywhere I can find some information about what's important to Milford and Milford history?" And I don't know if everybody's aware, but the Historical Commission has a really great summary on the town website. So I was able to point her in that direction. She also asked about the makeup of the community, and so I was able to direct her to the seven primary immigrant groups in Milford. And she was really careful to include lots of skin tones. She said she made a point to include different body types, different ages. And there are some subtle references to the flags of the seven primary immigrant communities. So some of them are more obvious than others, I think. But on the top right, you can see the kite there is representative of the Italian flag. The Stanley Cup in the lower-right corner is Irish flag. The young woman standing on the red cube over here on the far left, I think that's Ecuador, her shirt. Portugal is on the sleeve of the guy balancing on that blue cube. Brazil in the green shirt. And there's Armenia, and Egypt is that other Stanley Cup. But there's so much in here.
It's true. Really, I mean...
There's so much in...
She covered everything practically.
She did. There's a scarlet hawk on that one guy's t-shirt, and even the flowers in the background, they're the state flower, which is the mayflower. That was something I learned. Chris, there's one more slide, if you don't mind. So this isn't in your packet, but there is bonus art on the flip side of the training wall. So there's a diagram here at the top. So this is the side of the training wall that has the equipment attached to it. And there are four sections where you can see... It's not art, art, but there's like that heart on fire. And then there's three more. Those areas, the studio at the National Fitness Campaign refer to those as windows. So the artist has created original illustrations for each of those windows on that side of the training wall, all in the same style, color palette, and design that's on the mural on the other side. But they're, you know, they're different, and these folks are actually using the cubes and the diagrams that are on the fitness mat on that side of the mural. Schedule, Jim gave me an update earlier this afternoon. Construction is involved, so the schedule's a little bit further into the year than initially anticipated. But it's looking like the Town Park project will be finished at the end of the summer, into August, correct? Once the Town Park renovation is complete, there are plans for a celebration event, and the Cultural Council will be working with the Parks Department to help organize whatever we're going to do for that. That's all to be determined.
That's great.
But we already have some ideas for that, and the National Fitness Campaign also has some really great ideas for that. So we... The Cultural Council's very excited to be a part of this. It's always great to be working with Jim. It's our... It's like our first really major public art project in Milford. And I do want to thank the three of you because you've all been very supportive of all of our projects for, you know, throughout your tenure. And we look forward to your support in the future.
This is a fantastic presentation, and I'll tell you right now, I know the three of us are very excited as well.
Oh, great.
Again, thank you for all you and your council does. It adds so much to Milford and makes it a better place to live and work, and all because of you and your committee. Thank you so much. And also, Jim, fantastic job, too. Thank you for the cooperation. Great teamwork. When you work as a team, you can accomplish great things, I'll tell you. Tom and Mike?
I was surprised that Jimmy didn't win Connecting the Colors. I think it's really awesome. I mean, as you started appointing things out...
Yeah.
You know, it really... It strikes you that, you know, it's reflective of the community. I just think it's an ideal piece of art. But, you know, Jerry, as Paul said, you know, the council, you've been spreading art across this community, you know, which is fantastic. I mean, from picnic tables to trash barrels to...
Right.
You name it. Anything you can put a brush to. And it's, you know, and I think that, you know, to do this in the manner in which you're doing it, where it can't be vandalized, you know, it can be maintained...
Right.
...in the form that it's meant to be maintained so that people enjoy it, I think is also just a fantastic approach. And I thank you for all the work that you, the council, the park commissioners, Jim, have done with Blue Cross Blue Shield and other partners to get this done.
True.
So I'm grateful. I know my colleagues are, and I know the community will be.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, I have to, for a second, back up to... And I... Sometimes I do this. My years in the school committee...
Yeah.
I used to... Having served in the school committee for the arts, I have a whole new perspective of it. And I go back to one night when we had the senior night, and the keynote speaker, of course, has to be a... course, has to be a graduate of Milford High School, but at the time, he was the lead graphic designer for the New York Times.
Oh, wow.
And he put up on the screen different color covers that he had done for the New York Times.
Wow.
And why he had done them, the way he had drawn them, Hillary Clinton, all that. And I was just amazed that he explained why the eyes were the way they were, why the lips were the... So it made me start thinking, you know, and music, you know, listen to it, it's telling a story. And boy, you know, and I look here tonight, and it's the same thing. It's Milford, and it's telling a story.
Right, right.
If you take the time, and I would say to people in this community, when this is up, and I know Jim is, everything he does is great, when it's up, just take the time to not walk by it. Stop and admire it and look at it, because it's telling us the story of our community, the culture, you know, of our community. And, you know, we hear this all the time, all of us around town, well, Milford isn't the same. It's not the same. It's not. But that doesn't mean that it can't be great, and it is great.
Right, exactly.
And it's things like this that make you just stop and say how all these different cultures and all the history, the history's not forgotten. Here it is, but all these different cultures within our community can all get along, you know, and be respectful of the culture. And it's basically, it's all right here. So thank you again very, very much. Great, great job. And Jim, as always, thank you so much for the support you give everybody, you know, in projects like this. Great job, and thank you.
And if a community's healthy, it's successful.
That's great.
There you go.
How you just gonna get us out there?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Great job. Really, very proud.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys.
Jerry, very nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Okay. That was a great presentation, I'll tell you. That's a great addition to our town as well. That's great. Anyway, next on the addition, and our agenda under New Business would be the Planning Board Recommendation. And that would be a memo that we have from Larry Duncan regarding that we have a, regarding a zoning bylaw amendment regarding beekeeping uses under the residential animal provisions to the Planning Board for a public hearing, so we can remand that to them to go to the Planning Board for a public hearing. So it'll be included on our May 20, 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. And again, this is in response, this is Larry's memo in response to recent inquiries to the building officials. By residents interested in pursuing beekeeping on their residential property, I have developed the following zoning bylaw amendment for inclusion on the upcoming Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Because beekeeping is currently not allowed in the zoning bylaw, the amendment proposed new language for the zoning bylaw that would include beekeeping uses under the residential animal provisions. The amendment will retain the requirement for a special permit from the ZBA and will only allow for such uses within RB, RC, and RD residential districts, where they have larger lot sizes and lower density of development patterns. And again, you know, they want us to refer to the amendment for the Planning Board for a public hearing and report to the town meeting for the May 20, 2024 Annual Town Meeting. And as you all both saw, the example of the article is below this. And again, beekeeping is becoming pretty popular. I mean, they're very important in our environment and in our world. They're pollinators for plants and food and so on and so forth, but I'm glad they haven't it regulated because there's certain things that individuals would have to adhere to, such as the proper resources to have these colonies, and also to prevent swarming and anything like that. So it's something that I think should be at least giving residents the opportunity to have them. As a matter of fact, if, I don't know if you saw the news yesterday, there was a beekeeper, a very large one, you know, that he was using for honey and plant production. And some of, it was in North Carolina, and they stole close to a million bees. And he said they were worth a lot of money, I mean, on the black market. So, you know, it's something that, again, is very important to our environment and to our food sources as well. Anybody have any comments?
Well, just, I mean, you know, over the years, you look at different stories and, you know, through the media, that bee populations are in trouble. So advancing them, I mean, they're actually putting in beehives up on the roofs of buildings in the city of Boston.
Yes, they are.
The locations. So, you know, they pollinate not just out here, you know, where we have trees and grass, but actually even throughout, you know, the urban environment. So it's important to us. It's actually a health issue as well, because they are a major pollinator. I would move that we remand the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to the Planning Board and that it be advanced to town meeting for the May 20, 2024.
Right.
Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you, Tom.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. And like I said, just for the public's information, they will be honeybees, which are not aggressive. It's not your hornets or your wasps or whatnot. They'd be honeybees that would be the ones that would be.
It's the best thing for you if you have a cold.
Yeah.
Or if you have allergies, local honey is the best thing in the world.
Exactly. Nothing like it.
Take it from someone that knows.
Next on the agenda is the Sacred Heart Women's Club. They are asking for a one-day-all alcoholic license beverage application that they filled out, which would be for wine only, though. And they're going to be celebrating their 100th anniversary, to be held on Saturday, April 20, 2024, between the hours of 4:30 PM and 10:00 PM at the Sacred Heart Bell Tower Room, which is located on 11 East Main Street. I guess their application is filled out, everything is in order. Again, it's for wine only, and we have the time and dates and whatnot, and it's their 100th anniversary of their club. Any suggestions or comments?
Chairman, I make a motion, they had asked for 5:30 to 10:00 PM. I would make it 4:30 to 11:00 PM. That allows them to set up, it allows them to close properly in accordance with a license of this kind.
Sure.
So I would recommend a license be issued for 4:30 PM to 11:00 PM on April 20, 2024 to the Sacred Heart of Jesus Church for a benefit for the Sacred Heart Women's Club.
Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous. Thank you very much, and good luck to them, 100 years. Next on the agenda would be a, number four, would be a transfer, would be a transfer of a common vickers license, which is VR takeout at 206 East Main Street. And they're seeking a transfer of a common vickers license from Paulo's Kitchen Group. The manager will be Adriano Vieira Gomes, and all the paperwork is in order. Again, it's for a common vickers license transfer. The building commissioner reviewed it, and everything is, it's in an IB zone. Building restrooms are accessible, and group B use and occupancy, the town planner okayed it, but it must limit to the inside order pickup only. There's no drive-through or walk-up window permitted. The tax collector states that there is no outstanding taxes, no problems with the town treasurer. Fire chief has no objections. Police chief approved. And the board of health says they are all in compliance with the state sanitary codes. Everything is in order. Comments or questions or motions from our colleagues?
I make a motion that we allow the transfer of common vickers license from Paulo's Kitchen Group to be our takeout at 206 East Main Street.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda are three permits to obstruct applications from St. Mary's Parish. The first is an application for a permit to obstruct on Saturday, March 23, 2024, for a procession for Palm Sunday. The procession will leave the parish center hall and exit by the driveway behind the church to Granite Street, and then take an immediate right onto Summit Street, then onto Main Street, and then take a right onto Winter Street to enter the upper church. Police Chief Tazino did review this and has approved the application. Did you want to go one after another, or do you want to approve all three at the same time?
I'd approve all three at the same time. This is a very common.
Yes, they have been doing it.
Event for the church. So I make a motion that we approve the application to obstruct for St. Mary's Parish. Permit to obstruct on Saturday, March 23, 2024, for procession for Palm Sunday, so that's the day prior.
Then you have Easter.
Likewise, to obstruct on Sunday, March 24.
That would be Good Friday.
2024.
Right, okay, yes.
For the procession of Palm Sunday. And lastly, permit to obstruct for the procession of Good Friday for the Stations of the Cross on Friday, March 29, 2024, as stated in the application.
Excellent, very good.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda would be, excuse me, Rick, we skipped over. We skipped the town administrator.
If you want to finish this one, then.
Yeah, let me just finish, because I figured there's town administrator, when I saw town administrator with you. Okay, we have a form for nominations of the four inspector of animals, and our town administrator, Attorney Valani, recommending the board to appoint Keith Ains as the inspector of animals.
I make a motion that we appoint Keith Ains as the inspector of the animals, as required by statute.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Rick, before we get into invitation to speak, we can go right to town administrator's report.
Sure, thank you. Just two items tonight. I do want to update the board, the Department of Public Utilities will be conducting a virtual public hearing to receive comments on the town's filing of its municipal aggregation plan. This is the next step in the process. The hearing will use video, Zoom video conferencing on March 25, 2004. It will begin at 2:00 PM. Attendees can join by entering a link from a computer, smartphone, or tablet. No prior software download will be required. There is also only, there also is only access for hearings via audio, if you'd like to do it that way. There's a lot of information. If you go to the town website, you can find the link and the telephone numbers. If you, there's also an opportunity to send comments beforehand by email, so you can do that. There is an email address, it's lauren, L-A-U-R-E-N dot morris, M-O-R-R-I-S, at mass.gov. And you can include your name, email address, and mailing address. There's also the way to do it, to send comments in writing to the department via email, and you'll have to the close of business on March 25, 2024, 5:00 PM. If anybody has any problem accessing that information, please call my office, and we can assist you. The second item, I'm just, I'm pleased to report the town received a $95,000 grant through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. It's an MVP stormwater grant, no formal match required. Grant will require the creation of a core group. It'll be made up of approximately five municipal staff and five community liaisons. The participation of the municipal staff in recruiting the community liaisons and the identification of the town's climate resiliency needs was a commitment made by the town in accepting this grant. The selected municipal employees will be John Fernandez from the Board of Health, Felicia Gonzalez from the Police Department, Lisa Kincaid from the School Department, Tom Morelli of the Sewer Department, and James Vignone of the Fire Department. So I want to thank Liz Minini especially for applying for and receiving this grant, and I want to thank the individuals who will be working.
Excellent.
On the project itself.
Good job.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Rick. We also have, what I'd like to do under New Business as well, just to mention the comprehensive plan that I'm on that committee, and the ad hoc committee, we did meet our first time with the Planning Board on March 5, and we met with two of the senior members of the MAPC team, Josh and Courtney. And they explained to us in detail this packet that we all have here. And it was more or less just like, to get to know the town better, to get, once that the program gets going, they will get the town involved, be it elected and appointed officials, residents, businesses, medical people, just to get a sense of what direction they should go in to have this comprehensive plan going. We'll be meeting again on April 2nd, to go into it a little bit more detail. And hopefully, if everything goes well, they will have the plan done by approximately March 31st on 2025. It'll be complete once they get everything done. Again, they'll have their, a website, they'll have questions and answers, and they'll have an opportunity for people to bring their own ideas in as well. So you're getting, you know, ideas and suggestions from the entire town, if they, anybody who would want to participate. And that was, again, that was at the meeting of March 5 at the Planning Board. Next on the agenda would be invitation to speak. We have no one online, we have no one here. The next on the agenda is correspondence, and we do have some correspondence from our fire chief, Mark Nelson, and he wrote to Attorney Valani, our town administrator, saying that firefighters, Corey Flostrum, Jose Coletta, Jr., and Juan Fernando Rules, completed Massachusetts Fire Fighting Academy recruit training and were assigned to a 20 to 24-hour shifts. Firefighters Flostrum and Rules are certified emergency medical technicians and are Milford residents. These positions were created by retirement, and additional openings are anticipated this year. Our new firefighters are enthusiastic and looking forward to serve in our community, and we welcome them and wish them the best. Also, under correspondence, I have something too that was sent to me from the Citizens of Milford, Nancy Wojcik, and it says, Dear Chairman Mazakelli, Citizens for Milford and the Friends of Milford Upper Charles Trail will be holding the 9th Annual Beautification Day on Saturday, April 27, 2023, from 9:00 AM through 1:00 PM, rain or shine. We would like to invite you, as well as Selectman Walsh, Selectman Olafland, and Attorney Valani, to join us in cleaning up the streets of Milford. This event has been such a success, and we hope that the Select Board will approve this worthwhile event. Thank you for your continued support. Again, as we all know, throughout the whole nine years, I mean, eight years so far, it's been a fantastic thing that everybody got together, they worked together as a team, they cleaned up our town, and they showed that they take pride in our town. I think last year, we had close to 13 to 15 truckloads of rubbish that went by our town. And again, it's just from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that much rubbish was picked up. It's a great event and another great organization, the Citizens of Milford, and we thank them for all they do for the town. Nancy and also Amy Sandborn, who was also very instrumental in getting this program going as well. So I think, I think this letter here that was sent to us was asked to approve this as well. I think it was, because she did say we'd hope to approve it, so do you want to go make a motion to approve the beautification day for April 27, 2023, from 9:00 to 1:00?
I don't know that they need our approval to clean up our community, but I welcome the effort and the support. They've done this again for many years. So I would make a motion that we support.
Okay.
As a town entity government, the Citizens for Milford and the Friends of the Upper Milford Charles Trail in the 9th Annual Beautification Day on Saturday, April 27, from 9:00 PM to 1:00 PM, in making our community a brighter place.
Sure.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Make that unanimous, and thank you so much. Thank you, Nancy. Other than that, we do not have any executive sessions this evening. Therefore, if there's no other comments or questions or anything anybody would like to add, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I make that unanimous, and I, good evening, everybody, and thank you for letting us into your home. Have a good night.